I call to order the October 23 city council meeting. Welcome, everybody. We want to let you know that if you wish to speak during any of our public hearing process, there is sign up sheets in the back.
Is the table back there?
Yeah, oh, over on the side. Go ahead and sign up if you would, if you wish to speak, and we will get to you as the agenda rolls through. Mr. Lee, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I'll plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, rolling right through. Number three, we'd like to, we have to adopt the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Allen, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any suggestion, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four, zero. Let's see here. Number, item number four, matters from mayor. Well, our mayor is actually a little under the weather tonight, as at home watching through streaming on YouTube, I'm sure, so she's going to keep an eye on me for every, every little mistake I make, and she'll correct me later, I'm sure. So we wish her to get well quickly, and hopefully it doesn't spread throughout the Williams House. Item five is matters from council members. I'd like to lead off by saying, Waynesboro High School football, this Friday night is the last home game. Encourage everybody to come out and support the little Giants and, and make a good, a good showing against Riverheads this Friday night. Give the kids, especially the seniors, who this is most likely going to be their last game, show them a lot of support and give them a, a good, a good ending to a season. I'll just leave it at that. How about that? All right, that's it from me. Anything from anybody else? All right, roll right through here. All right, item six is to consider the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes with a four, zero vote. Item seven, it is to hold a public hearing and to consider adopting an ordinance for a zoning map amendment upon application by draft building company to amend proffers for tax map numbers forty-three dash one fifteen A and forty-three dash one fifteen C located at zero Ludewitt Boulevard. Ms. Tate?
Good evening. I reviewed this two weeks ago, but because the public hearing is tonight, I will run through it again to kind of update everyone on the specific request. So the location, you can see here, the parcel is split on either side of Bryant Drive, and you can see that outlined and blue off of Ludewitt Boulevard. The request is to amend the existing proffers that were agreed to as part of the 2001 rezoning from residential to commercial. The applicant notes that restrictions have made the property difficult to sell and develop, and that the limitations on the property don't reflect how the surrounding area has developed. The proffers that were approved in 2001 are the following seven. So a maximum of 60,000 square feet of building shall be constructed on the eight-point-six acre parcel. The property would be developed only for professional office and retail. No gas stations, fast food, or convenience stores would be allowed. Three talks about signage. A single low-rise monument sign would be provided on Ludewitt Boulevard for the entire complex. Individual low-rise monument signs are allowed for individual building entrances. No neon signs would be allowed. All signs shall be of a unified style and subject to architectural review. All buildings will have a minimum roof pitch of seven-twelfths. All buildings will be constructed with brick exterior. No buildings shall have an exposed metal or concrete block exterior. All buildings and site plans shall be subject to architectural review, and no more than one half of the required and available parking area shall be oriented to or visible from Ludewitt. This aerial shows how the surrounding area has developed. So you can see Pratt's Run subdivision. There is a Caribbean car wash adjacent to the property. Lowe's is also adjacent to the property on the half that's on that side of Bryant Drive. You can see the Elks Lodge and some additional single-family residential and other commercial within the vicinity. So the property is currently zoned for highway business, which that zoning designation does allow all commercial uses and some light industrial ones meant for businesses that rely on close proximity to major transportation routes. And so within our comprehensive plan, that really focuses on those arterials and highways such as Interstate sixty-four, US three forty, two fifty, and also Ludewitt. This map shows the existing zoning, so the red is indicative of highway business zoning. You can see the lighter yellow is RS twelve, kind of the lowest density residential. And you can see the adjacent Bryant Drive RG five zoning designation. There's also some of that across the street on Ludewitt. So some history about the property. The land in the Ludewitt corridor was annexed from Augusta County in 1986. The areas around Rossar Avenue, West Main Street were likely brought in as commercial remaining area residential. The Ludewitt Boulevard was constructed in the early 1990s, and as that corridor developed, parcels along Ludewitt were rezoned individually to commercial. The city's 1998 comprehensive plan called for development that would discourage strip development, respected environmental constraints, and provided the right mix of access to current and future residential developments. That comprehensive plan also suggested that the city work towards design criteria that would help guide the look of development along the Ludewitt corridor. So the applicant's rezoning took place shortly after that comprehensive plan was adopted, and that request was in 2001, and so those proffers were likely submitted with those goals in mind from that comprehensive plan. The Lowe's development occurred after that in 2004, 2005, and may have shifted some of those aspirations. Much of the development along the corridor has been a mix of types. The current proffers are no longer reasonable expectations for the development of the property. Many of the proffered restrictions can be regulated by the city's current zoning ordinance. I will point out that at the time the proffers were submitted, we had a different zoning ordinance that maybe didn't cover to the extent the signage and the parking and things like that. So some of those things today, while maybe not as strict as the existing proffers, would fall within the city's current zoning designations and current guidelines for all properties that are zoned highway business within the city. So I won't read through each of them again, but so the first proffer about the square footage maximum, the applicant is requesting to remove that proffer, and so if approved, the maximum square footage of any building would really just be determined by the necessary sighting requirements. So they take care of their stormwater, their parking, so that would really govern the size of the building. There would be no specific maximum placed on it. The second is related to the use. So currently it reads that the property will be developed only for professional office and retail uses. No gas stations, fast food, or convenience stores will be allowed. So the applicant is requesting to amend this proffer to say that no gas stations, fast food, convenience stores, or twenty-seven, twenty-four-seven retail businesses will be allowed. But that certainly opens them up to additional business uses that are permitted either by right in highway business or through a conditional use permit process that are above and beyond the professional office and retail uses that are currently identified by the proffers. The next is related to signage. So the applicant is requesting removal of that proffer. Zoning ordinance section ninety-eight dash five-point-six is what regulates our current sign standards, and so if approved, and this proffer was to be removed, this existing signage that's regulated throughout the city would apply, and that is, it deals with height maximums and square footage sizes and lighting. Again, it may not be as stringent as this requirement, but it would be regulated that way. The next is that all buildings will have a minimum roof pitch of seven-twelfths. The applicant is requesting removal, so certainly the intent was to avoid buildings with flat roofs, and staff does note that there are a variety of roof pitches that can be found throughout the Ludewitt corridor. The next is about building materials. So the applicant is requesting removal of that proffer. Buildings along the corridor do have a variety of exteriors, and this would allow the applicant, if approved, to construct the building of any material, because that's not something that is regulated through our existing zoning ordinance for highway business property. The next one is that all buildings and site plans will be subject to architectural review. The applicant is requesting removal. Any proposed development does go through site plan review, but there isn't a typical architectural review for other sites within that highway business zoning. And then last is about the parking, and essentially trying not to make the parking so oriented to Ludewitt to kind of be, you know, visually obtrusive. The applicant is requesting to remove that. The zoning ordinance does have kind of robust parking area design requirements. If you put so many spaces together, you have to have landscaping and, and things like that. So if this was to be removed, the ordinance would govern as far as maximum number of spaces, excuse me, minimum number of spaces, and then also any kind of landscaping that would be associated with the, the property. So in addition to the one amendment for the proffer about uses and the removal of the other six, the applicant is also, are proposing an additional proffer, and that is that fifteen feet of existing vegetation shall be maintained along the property line that's abutting the residentially zoned area. Staff does point out that there is a thirty-foot greenway easement along that boundary with Pratt's Run, and you can see that area represented in the blue box. So over the last 20 years, the Ludewitt corridor has, you know, not entirely developed as envisioned in the 1998 comprehensive plan. The original proffers made sense at the time, but ended up being more restrictive than some of the other types of development that have happened along the corridor, and so some of these conditions have not been in place for other development along the corridor. Staff and the planning commission do recommend approval with the proffers as amended, and those are that there be fifteen feet of existing vegetation maintained along the property line abutting the residentially zoned area, and no gas stations, fast food, convenience stores, or twenty-four-seven retail businesses would be allowed. And that's all I have unless you have any questions, and the applicant is here to speak to the request.
One question I haven't asked yet. This information here, has it been supplied to the HOA president?
So as part of the notification, we do have to notify any adjacent property owners and any property owners across the street. I would have to look and see if one specifically went to the HOA president. I'd have to check the file. But I believe the HOA president was, if I remember correctly, was at the planning commission and spoke, so I believe they have been notified. But I, I'd have to confirm if we sent them a letter in our file.
Okay. Does anybody have any specific questions for Leslie?
Yeah, that, yes, that was in the original, and so the, yeah, that, that would stay fifteen foot.
Okay, thank you, Leslie.
Yes.
All right, so, we are going to open the public hearing, and I just want to remind everybody, as far as the time limits go, once the light hits yellow, you have 30 seconds. We ask that you do wrap it up. That way, everybody gets a, gets a chance to speak, and gets the same amount of time to speak. So with that, hereby, open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. The applicant is present this evening, and I believe if you wish to speak, this would be appropriate time.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Wood, and I'm here as a representative of Draft Building. I'm just going to read the prepared statement.
You're getting an overwhelming ass to speak up a little bit.
This is not my thing.
Can you pull the mic towards you, baby? It's all right, we're all friends here.
Hi, my name is Carrie Wood. I'm here as a representative of Draft Building, and I'm just going to read the prepared statement I read in front of the planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. The proffers were made in 2001 at the advice of the city planner at the time, in line with the comprehensive plan that was then existing for the Ludewitt corridor. There was not much development on the road then. The comprehensive plan has been amended since, allowing for construction of stores like Lowe's, Tractor Supply Company, Napa Auto. In addition, there's a strip mall and a car wash that are built nearby, restaurants close by, and there's more construction going on across the road. It was the intent of Draft Building Company at the time the proffers were made that it would develop the property. However, since then, between the economic turn down of 2008 and the death of the original owner of Draft Building Company in 2011, his family members as heirs and current owners are no longer in the building business, and they wish to sell the property. We do have a commercial realtor who's advised us that the existing proffers are too stringent for any potential purchases, purchasers, since they're more restricted than the land use allowed in the surrounding area. Larry Wood, one of the owners of Draft Building, was responsible for the planning and building of most of Pratt's Run, the neighborhood behind the property at question, and he takes pride in his involvement in that neighborhood. His intent is to maintain the property values and the aesthetics for the homeowners in Pratt's Run, and as such, ask that the proposed proffers of maintaining the fifteen-foot buffer of existing vegetation within the thirty-foot greenway be approved, as well as the proffer amendment, which would not allow the construction of gas stations, fast food restaurants, convenience stores, or twenty-four-seven retail businesses. I would be happy to answer any questions if I have the answers for, for you.
Any questions?
And there are different sections within that neighborhood, and there are, there's a homeowners' association for one section, but not for another section. So that may, that may be the issue. Yes, sir. That is my, that's my understanding. Yes, sir. The fact that it's all brick and the roof pitch are more expensive than other types of buildings that could be built, and I believe that the offers that have been made have been for things that would be prohibited by the proffers as they exist because of the restrictions having to do with building materials and roof pitch. Yes, sir. Yes, especially because the nearby car wash in Lowe's don't, you know, they don't have those same requirements on them. There's the easement. I believe that the buffer would be incorporated into the easement. And then, of course, there would be setbacks than anything that's part of zoning. There's, there's an existing buffer. There's, there's mature growth there. No plans for the fifteen feet of mature growth to come down. I think as far as when we, when we sell it, and that would, if that proffer is accepted, that would be, that would apply to the purchaser, is my understanding. That, that's the proffer that we're offering, to keep the fifteen foot of, and it is mature growth at present. There's trees, there's shrubs, there's definite growth there. It wouldn't be new plantings. There's already fifteen feet of buffer there, at least fifteen feet, and that would, that would be as part of the proffer required to stand.
You said that the, if I remember right, you said you had talked to real estate agents about the problems with the proffers?
Yes.
Those real estate agents haven't targeted any specific type of business?
There have been offers, but when they've discovered that there are the proffers, they've backed out.
Do you know what those businesses are?
One was, one was storage, storage facilities, which I think are now going up across the street.
Okay.
Across the other side of Ludewitt.
Okay, that's the only one?
There've been others, I, I'm not a member of Draft Building, but that's, that's the one I've heard about, and there, there's been another offer, but after discovering the restrictive nature of the proffers, they've lost interest.
Gotcha, okay.
Curiosity, what, how, how long have the heirs been actively marketing the property for sale?
I believe we had a, have had a listing since 2014.
And what is the, the asking price? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay. All the questions I have?
I have.
Do we have anybody else signed up for the?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Edith Ekman?
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Edie Ekman, resident of Morgan Court in the Pratt's Run subdivision. As we've just heard, the matter before council concerns the removal of the seven existing proffers and the addition of two proffers on a parcel of land that straddles Bryant Drive, and which also happens to be the single entrance into the Pratt's Run subdivision and the visual introduction to our neighborhood. Just as a reminder, if you're familiar with the northernmost entrance to Lowe's, Bryant Drive is the road that you're on for just a second before you turn into Lowe's, and it continues down the hill into our neighborhood. The current argument in favor of the original, removal of the original proffers, we have just heard, and I won't go into those. My concern is that the planning commission has not taken into consideration the impact the change, such a change would have on the neighboring homeowners. Occasionally, I serve as a viewer for city council. When city council is considering vacating or altering a public street or alley, council appoints three viewers to assess the proposed change and quote, ascertain and report if any inconvenience will result to the public, and whether, in their opinion, any special damage will be suffered by the landowner or landowners abutting thereon, end quote. I realize this request is not for the vacation of a street, but I do believe that the proposed changes would have an impact on the neighboring homeowners. I don't have time to detail all my concerns here, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from my other neighbors. Although I would point out that part of the parcel involved doesn't actually front on Ludewitt. It's only on, only fronts on Bryant Drive itself. What I would ask is for council to postpone a decision on this matter, in order to allow city staff, the property owner, and the neighboring Pratt's Run homeowners to further discuss the impacts and come to a conclusion that will benefit all parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Knight?
My name is Bill Knight. I live in Pratt's Run. I live on Bryant Drive, further down from the, where the proposed changes are. The concern I have is about the bricks on the buildings. Just to digress a minute, in 2019, we were looking to buy a house, and we bought one ultimately in Pratt's Run. There was an area in the back which was undeveloped, and I had asked, is that likely to be developed in the future? The answer I got from the realtor was, no, because the developer-owner did not feel he could make money selling units, and so therefore, he did not think that was, the realtor did not think that. Subsequent to that, four or five months later, I was, we used to have an annual picnic, and I talked to the president of the HOA, and basically, he reaffirmed what I had heard from the realtor. Okay, so now we have, we have these five, six lots back there. About a year ago, an individual builder bought two of the lots, put up a duplex, has brick siding in the front, and sold it for excess of $400,000. With that said, he bought the next two lots, did the same thing. Ultimately, the final two lots were purchased, and they were developed, all of these have brick, all of these have brick, and so prior to the last two even being finished, they were sold in well over $800,000. So to say that the, the brick facing is going to create undue hardship, I question it frankly. I think there could be a whole lot more than that. There are areas that I see in residential property that have brick and done nicely. We also have Lowe's with that bright blue metal siding. I'm not too keen on that. And the fact that it is going to go right through, and, I'm sorry, in order to get back to Pratt's Run, you have to go right through where the, the two lots are. So if anything, I would like to see the building, if it's facing Bryant, Bryant Drive, have a brick siding, and so it, it's consistent with how things would flow going into the community. I don't believe the brick is such a hardship. I don't know much about roof pitch, but I'm sure that's, should not be a deal breaker. And so that's where I come down. I hear people saying that if we do this, it's going to destroy the community, the property values are going to go down, and so on and so forth. I don't believe that. But I certainly do believe that it'll do nothing to enhance the value of the properties involved. So I would ask that some more studies need to be done. The owners are looking for a quick fix, and that may work well for them. I don't believe it works well for, for the community at large. So I won't bore you with anything else, but that's where I stand, and if you have any questions or you want to challenge me, fine.
Now, this is for you, for you to speak your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Fairley?
I don't think this works. I think the presence of all these residents speaks for itself. We're concerned about what this development is going to look like, how you're going to control the style of buildings, the facades, the parking. It's not a Ludewitt property, it's a Bryant Drive property, and this really, it's very important to us, and we, I don't think we want anything like the auto parts building on Ludewitt. I think that was unfortunate, and I just hope that you will do something proper. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Noe-
Doug Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I am Doug Nolan. I live at 105 Jasper Lane, Pratt's Run subdivision. I'm the president of the Pratt's Run Homeowners Association. We have with us here tonight many of our neighbors and members who were there. They were happy to have them, and many folks have sent comments on. Appreciate, Ms. Bordle, you're forwarding those to the members of council and the city manager. Before I start with things, I'll answer a couple of questions. One, you asked about having been supplied with some information in anticipation. The answer to that is, I did not receive anything directly from the city. The city posted a sign on Bryant advising of potential zoning changes. In response to that, I went and met with the city planning office, and since that time, I have reviewed all of the staff reports that have been submitted as part of the agenda, both to the planning commission and to this group, and I did speak at the planning commission meeting. In response to your question, Mr. Allen, in Pratt's Run, until the beginning of this year, Mr. Wood, who is the principal in draft building, was retained control of the architectural review of all of the buildings in Pratt's Run, as long as he owned any properties there. He disposed of his last properties March of this year, and then relinquished his control of the architectural review board. As president of the architectural review board, he approved the buildings on Laurel Run. Those have mostly a brick facade, but there is some siding on it. That was his choice to approve that, and that's what happened with that and the source with that. As to the comments about the issues before, so I'd ask that you bear with me a little bit. I have a slightly more complicated presentation than some of the others have offered. As previously stated, the original property contained 8.604 acres, was zoned general business with proffers, the removal or modification of which are the subject of this hearing. Larger parcel had road frontage on Ludewitt Boulevard. In 2002, Mr. Wood, as the principal of another company, that is, the company that developed Pratt's Run subdivision, caused a plat to be recorded, and that plat to be recorded created the road that effectively subdivided his properties. His proffers really didn't work after he subdivided them. But anyway, he subdivided the properties. That road became Bryant Drive. And this year, Mr. Wood recorded a boundary line adjustment plat to designate the parcel closest to Lowe's as parcel 115C with 3.6 acres and more, 115A with 4.4 acres, and the city tax records reflect that subdivision. There are two lots now, whereas when we first started this with the proffers, there was one lot. If you look at parcel 115C, the three-plus acre parcel, you'll see that it has no road frontage on Ludewitt Boulevard. Although it is zoned highway business, it is not eligible for that zoning designation. The Waynesboro Code, section 98-2.6.2C states for HB districts, "These districts shall be restricted to areas located on arterials and highways." It does not state that it applies to parcels in the vicinity of an arterial or highway. Parcel 115C is solely on Bryant Drive. Neither an arterial nor a highway. This has a very practical effect for us, in that any commercial entrance for this property is going to be there on that road. I see my time is up, so.
I know. We've got to be fair to everybody.
Fair enough.
We could go on all night. Thank you, Mr. Nolan.
Yes, sir.
Carrie Wood.
That was me.
Okay. Todd Patrick.
Good evening. I want to pick up where Doug left off a little bit in regards to the zoning designation, the highway business. If that applied to the whole parcel at one point in time, there's a question of whether or not the subdivision would then devoid the 115C parcel of that designation, since it was a voluntary subdivision. It wasn't something done by VDOT putting in the road or something along those lines. That question has not been answered at this point in time. What that act may have done as far as for the correct zoning aspect as far as 115C. 115A, I think we can say yes. Obviously, that has road frontage. Whether or not VDOT would allow a curb cut to allow an entryway onto that, different question. I know that VDOT controls those curb cuts on Ludewitt. I'm personally thinking that they probably would not because of the proximity of that to Bryant Drive. It would probably require entryway onto 115A off of Bryant. That then also raises a question as to signage. We do have the signing restrictions in the zoning ordinance. The one thing I would point out that's in the proffers right now is there is a restriction on neon signs. Okay? That isn't necessarily going to be restricted underneath the signing ordinances that we have in place. Don't know. But we do know right now with the existing proffer, the developer had said, no neon signs. We like this. Some of you members know me. I am somebody who looks at things quite a bit. When I purchased property back there, I did look at the zoning of these particular parcels out there, because it is the entryway into the subdivision, and I looked and saw what the proffers were on it, and that was an enticement to go ahead and buy back there. And honestly, the biggest thing that we probably have here is that brick exterior. That is a big thing, because everything else in that subdivision has either a brick frontage or entirely brick. It just depends on where the property is located at. But that is our entryway. I mean, that is what presents the public with what to expect when you get down into the residential part of this whole thing. So that's a concern of ours. The other thing, certain things like parking restriction, yes, that's covered under zoning. We understand that. The roof pitch, I understand why the developer isn't going to want to hold on to something like that. Different needs. They could have flat or whatever. The one thing as far as the restrictive uses, we're keeping in some of those, which is great. We don't want to have a sheet 7-Eleven type of thing, even without a gas station part of it. So we appreciate the developer keeping those type of things in. Personally, I think we would like to have it more like it was originally envisioned. Office, you know, or professional retail, that's something that, again, is probably going to generate a little bit of a lower traffic count that's going to go in and out of that area there. It's going to be a little safer for all of us going in and out, and it's going to promote more of a residential feel. So we like the fact that it was going to be restricted to that. I understand the developers having a problem moving the property. I've been in the community since 2008. It's been for sale since then, so I understand that there's some need here. But I'll be very honest with you. When I heard from the representative of the applicant here, that one of the uses or one of the approaches that they had was for self-storage, and they didn't do it because of the brick requirement, I like that. That's the purpose of that brick requirement. We want to keep it in a better light as far as for property values and just, like I said, the entryway into it. Last thing I'll say is in regards to the 15-foot buffer zone, yes, we like the existing vegetation that's there. We'd love to keep that, but remind you that that's a savings to the developer. They don't have to go in, grow it, and replant it, and also, it is within, as they pointed out, the existing 15 easements, so it's not really anything that they're giving us in addition.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it, sir.
That's it? I do have one more question of Leslie. I'm sorry to hit you last second like this. There's only one road in there, and neither one of us were here when this was planned. Do you know why there was no second entrance into or out of that area?
No, so the comments about Ludewitt would be that VDOT would have to approve any entrances, so likely there would be some kind of shared entrance, potentially with the Tiger Car Wash or something to that degree. But no, I'm not aware, you know, our current ordinance doesn't have a requirement for having, you know, fire and rescue often comments on having multiple entrances for developments, but we actually don't currently have an ordinance requirement that requires it, and so likely didn't then also.
All right.
Just going to go back to the, so you can see the parcels and Bryant Drive in relation to Ludewitt.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, sitting here looking, and we have, we have received plenty of emails. I want you to know that I went through every one of them, all right, and I know most of us did. And we have heard the residents of Pratt Run, and we understand the motivation for the owner of why they want the proffers to be changed. First off, me personally, as the councilman from Orde, I'm so happy to see all you all come out and voice your concerns and support your community. But I think right now, what I would like to do, if there's no objections from the council, is I would like to ask for a motion to table this decision, if I'm doing this right, Mr. Hamp.
You're headed in the right direction. If you can close the public hearing first, and then.
Oh, see, the mayor's going to make fun of me for missing that part. Sorry. So since there are no more speakers, we're going to close the public hearing. And now, if there's no objections from other members of council, I would like to move forward and ask for a motion to table this decision until we look at it a little bit more and get some more details in place. I have talked to the HOA president and several folks here, and I just think there's more questions that need to be answered, a little more specifics that need to be detailed. So are we in the right direction now?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor to table this, do we have to make a specific date to, or can we just leave it open? All right, then I would like to, all those in favor to table this decision, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then this decision has been, on these proffers are being tabled for this time.
So I think, Mr. Vice Mayor, the staff is going to focus on materials and use unless the council has other specific guidance that you'd like to furnish.
I'd like to understand, it was a statement made about whether or not, we're talking zoning for Ludewitt or zoning for Bryant. I'd like to kind of understand that better.
Yes, we'll address that question as well.
And you know, I mean, when these folks bought their properties, they made an investment in Waynesboro. Some of them, this is their forever home, so they made a huge investment in Waynesboro. And in some of this discussion, at some point, I think the HOA president should be present if we can get together with Leslie and talk about some of the specifics, because we want to protect our citizens' investment, but we'd also understand the motivation why here. So we want to make sure that we do what's best for the community and make the best decision.
Right. I'm going to need to think through how we would do that, because, again, we've made a recommendation as a staff, and I think certainly, we want a couple objectives. We want to sort of meet council's expectations to the best of our ability in terms of changes. But I think we owe the, sort of the same fair and equal treatment to be either at the table or not at the table to both the applicant and the neighborhood.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I agree.
So we'll kind of think about how we do that.
I agree, because that's what we inevitably want, is a good decision that makes everybody happy.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, we wouldn't be making this decision.
Right.
They would mediate between the homeowners there now and the two B people that is changing proffers, so that everybody thinks they could live with it, and I give, understand it's a give and take on both sides, but I'd much rather prevent the mediator and have Ms. Tate maybe be the mediator.
[laughing]
And figure it out to where if they came back, they said, this is something we could live with, that would help the person that might want to develop it.
Yes, sir. I might just offer too, I think, you know, looking at the land records, it looks like the parcels were purchased originally in 1976, and so I would be interested to understand the valuation and that if, is it truly the driving force, the proffer driving the inability to transact the property relative to the, is the property being marketed at a market rate? You know, I think there's other variables in play, potentially.
We're good.
We're good.
We're all good.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I guess we're moving right along now. All right. So just for clarity, that issue is tabled, so all you folks here from Pratt's Run, if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to and see how we do things, or if you would like, Monday Night Football kicks off in 15 minutes, all right?
Number eight, I believe.
Number eight, yes. Item eight is upon application by Waynesboro Area Refuge Ministry, Inc., WARM, to hold a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance modifying an existing conditional use permit allowing temporary supportive housing operations at 1035 Fairfax Avenue, tax map number 26-1-9A R G five, general residential district, Waynesboro. Ms. Tate?
Okay, this, also, you received a presentation two weeks ago, and it is much more simple of a request than perhaps the one we just did, so I will try and keep this brief. This, oh, sure. Okay, so this is a request from Waynesboro Area Refuge Ministry, WARM, specifically related to the CUP condition that's in place for their 1035 Fairfax Avenue property. So the amendments would increase the maximum number of persons that are permitted in the building from 30 to 35, and this increase would allow WARM to serve one additional family, and then reduces the number of required staff, permanent, you know, 24/7 staff, from three down to one. So at this location, WARM provides temporary supportive housing only for women and children. It operates under a conditional use permit that was issued in 2013. The location is Fairfax Avenue and can host up to 28 homeless women and their children. There are eight bedrooms for guests and two for staff. The shelter operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. WARM has recently acquired space in the former Ark of Augusta building next door and moved their administrative offices there, which has opened up the ability for an additional room within the house to serve guests. So the request for the reduction in staff requirements aligns better with their current mission, so staff work in shifts rather than residing on-site at the property. So we'll still have one staff member on call at all times and one on shift at the facility at all times. And this obviously helps save money that can be put to other uses and then concern about finding staff to fill open positions. This aerial just shows the location of the property and more zoomed in. So these are the current stipulations related to the conditional use permit, and so I definitely won't read these, but B talks about having three full-time employees that are providing supervision 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and then C talks about how the facility shall not exceed more than 30 persons, and please note that that's inclusive of transitional clients, visitors, staff, volunteers at any given time, so that's not individuals actually staying there. So the requested changes are shown in red on this slide, so B would be changed from no less than three to one, no less than one full-time employee providing services and supervision 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and then the facility would not exceed more than 35 persons, so an additional five persons is part of the request. I did note that the building requirements, so a building permit application would obviously have to be filed for any alterations to the building, and the proposed design would need to meet the building code. Fire department will conduct annual fire prevention code inspections based on any new occupancy numbers once approved. The property is surrounded by Ark of Augusta property. There's some other adjacent uses that are industrial and residential, and staff doesn't see any negative impacts from these proposed changes, and staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the requested changes. And Representative from WARM is here to speak to the request. And Representative from WARM is here to speak to the request.
Allen, have any questions, Neil?
I think the only thing I asked last time was that we would have assurance that that staff member would be in the house and not over in the administrative office, and if that's the case, they guarantee us there's always at least one in the house. I think it's...
Yeah, so it will, if approved, it will read that they will maintain appropriate professional around-the-clock staffing coverage for the facility with no less than one full-time employee providing services and supervision 24 hours per day and seven days per week, and that the shelter will not operate at any time without at least one qualified staff member onsite, and then one on call.
On site, maybe in a note it would say in the house and not across the street in administrative office.
Yes, yeah, that is how we would interpret onsite, to mean at that location, at that building.
Yeah, the one question I had asked earlier was, I wanted to see, you know, what kind of responses that, on average, what comes to this facility, both fire, police, rescue, is there a way, if this goes forward, we could do sort of a temporary, just to make sure that the numbers don't, are not affected, I mean, just to make sure we're not opening a box we can't close?
I...
Is that possible?
Yeah, I'm not aware of the ability to do that, but I would ask legal counsel.
Okay.
Well, I think since it's a conditional use permit, if there is a violation of the conditional use permit...
Sure.
Then pull the permit.
And they could find out.
Yeah, there were violations, but I'm not sure about kind of sunsetting the provisions if we're noticing changes, so...
Yeah. There's, it's common practice, not necessarily for a sunsetting or a short term, but that you can, for example, it's common to have like, you know, in six months, you know, staff would inspect or revisit...
Okay.
To ensure that all of the CUP conditions are being, you know, enforced and met, and if there's any issues, it could come back before council.
Okay.
But there's really not, I mean, once you approve the CUP, it's...
It's there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
So...
So the applicant is present. I don't know if Mr. Edwards has anything to say.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, city staff. Just, I know that WARM is kind of alone in its role here in the city to provide homeless services, so definitely your questions are very thoughtful. We have kind of looked at all that, and definitely, we want, we always make sure that we have a staff member present 24/7, support staff either on call or at the administrative offices, Mr. Allen. This is, and not to be redundant to Ms. Tate's presentation, this just allows us to kind of fine-tune the CUP that was passed in 2013 by this body and amended in 2018. The exciting part is we are able to provide another room to a mother and children that we were not otherwise able to do, plus we were able to open up a little bit more office space for our growing staff, and reducing the number of staff allows us to be, to be more efficient with the resources coming into WARM and trying to find, as we are facing with most employers, difficulty finding adequate staffing levels. So that is why we requested to go from three full-time to one full-time. That one full-time would be the overnight individual who before would be sleeping, would be there on set. Now they will be actually a shift worker, and their role really is to open the door for guests or residents coming in and making sure that, you know, if there's any incidents requiring first responders, that they are, that they have someone present.
Is there any kind of, so since you're going from one person who stayed there to three people in a shift, is there policies in place for, are they gonna like sleep during the overnight shift, or are there gonna be an awake supervisor?
They're awake. We've moved away from having that, that person who's kind of served as a house parent to a house monitor. House parent kind of left a little interpretation that they just had to be present, and house monitor, that job description indicates that that person will be awake during their shift, their overnight shift, to make sure that, and we have a strict curfew, with the exception of our mothers who have, you know, come in late from work, you know, they're not permitted to come in late from a social outing, but they do work, shift works at local restaurants, other businesses, that that person is present to open the door for them, because they do not have access to open the door themselves.
Good deal. Any other questions, Mr. Edwards? All right. Then at this point, I guess I will open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
Then we will close the public hearing. Let's see if I'm in the right spot. The ordinance was introduced and discussed at the last regular business meeting. If council supports the ordinance in its current form, I call the questions. All in favor of adopting ordinance amending the existing conditional use permit allowing temporary supportive housing at 1035 Fairfax Avenue, RG 5, General Residential District, Waynesboro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. All right. Item nine is to consider adopting a resolution of support for an application by the Waynesboro Economic Development Authority for Industrial Revitalization Fund loan for property at 531 West Main Street. Mr. Hitchens?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As the name implies, the Industrial Revitalization Fund, which is how close we call it, IRF, is a program offered by the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Department of Housing and Community Development to leverage local and private resources to redevelop vacant and deteriorated industrial and commercial properties. Tonight, we are seeking a resolution of support for an application for 531 West Main Street, which is the first building west of the Wayne Theater's, Wayne Theater and Wayne Theater parking lot, so going up the hill, first building on the right same side of the street as Wayne Theater. We are seeking a resolution of support for the application, which is due on this Thursday. This is a 10 to 12 million dollar project. We're seeking a grant of $5 million from the Commonwealth with a developer matching the $5 to $7 million for the rest. There is no financial obligation from the city or the EDA for this grant match. The city, the EDA is simply the venue by which the application can be made and manages the funds. Any questions?
No, not for me. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. All right, so all in favor of adopting the resolution supporting the Wayne Theater alliances in, what?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, I got in a hurry. I'm looking for kickoff too, I'm sorry. So would somebody please introduce a motion in favor of adopting this resolution? Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right. Item 10 is to receive presentation of proposed Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program applications for the city. Ms. Tate?
Okay, so I'm bringing this presentation to you this evening. The applications are due October 31st, and so we will be coming back to finalize the resolution of support. That can come in after the applications are due, 'cause we're still in a little bit of flux of pinning down and finalizing those locations. So you'll note there are some questions throughout here, some that may be left in or may be taken out based on feedback. We are working with some technical assistance that's provided from V.V.B.H. is the firm that will be doing the cost estimating for us, and we're also kind of in flux with getting comments and feedback from Public Works and others related to the request. But I wanted to provide an update on what staff does plan to apply for with this program. So the H-SIP program funds local systemic initiatives, and so each bullet point represents what can be funded through these applications. So high-visibility signal backplates, if you'll remember, last year in 2022, we made an application that covered a wide range of those throughout the city, and that was funded. Pedestrian crossings is kind of the main thing that are a significant benefit through this program. We did put in a 2022 application that included a long list of pedestrian improvements, and we do plan to do another one in this round. Another systemic initiative is unsignalized intersections, and we do have plans to put in a 2023 application for those. Flashing yellow arrows, we put in a 2022 application that was funded. Road diets is another systemic initiative that can be funded through this program. We have not applied for that and don't plan to do that in this round. And then lastly is curve delineation, so additional markings and signage in curves that have significant crash history, and we do plan to do one of those with an application in this round. So this is a busy map, and I'm not gonna go into that much detail, it's hard to see, but this just kind of shows you the spatial analysis that staff goes to that identifies, you know, what are those high percentage segment corridors or locations based on crash history, and then kind of putting in existing funded projects, whether that be through Smart Scale or Revenue Share, any number of things, and then also identifying where we have already received H-SIP funding for high-vis backplates, pedestrian crossings, and flashing yellow arrows, and then also where are some other locations that we maybe would like to apply for in this round to meet some of those safety needs that we're seeing in the data. So just a brief update for the 2022 application. For the high-vis backplate and flashing yellow arrow application, we received $117,576. And for pedestrian improvements in 2022, which covered, I believe, about 15 different locations, we received $825,420. VDOT has agreed to administer those programs, and so that was in our previous rounds. For this round, the 2023 application, you really apply for it by systemic improvement, so you don't have to make an application for every location, but kind of think about it, what's the improvement, and then add all of the locations in. So we do plan to do a curve delineation application, and that would be for East Main Street, near the intersection of East Main Street and Hunter Street. I'm not exactly sure what that may entail, whether it be some additional signage, we're working with our consultant on that, or in pavement markings potentially, but that is a location that we've identified that has some crash history. Next would be unsignalized intersections, and you can see those listed where, you know, it maybe is as simple as adding stop bars that are not there currently in the pavement or some additional signage. So again, working with our consultant, not only for the cost estimating piece, but what specific recommendations might be needed at those various unsignalized intersections. And then the next is the pedestrian crossings. So some of that is, the locations, we've worked with Safe Routes to School Coordinator, we've worked with Public Works, we're working with the consultant V.B.H. to kind of identify what are some of these locations that we might wanna pursue. So I will run through these quickly and the ones that we're working towards for this application. So Fourth and Delphine, there's almost a complete community development block grant-funded improvement project there that includes some sidewalk and a pedestrian refuge, but pedestrian signals were not included as part of that project, so we would likely add those as kind of a separate standalone improvement with the H-SIP application. The next location is at South Wayne, Rife Road, Arch Avenue, and Lynnhurst, to update the high-vis crossings across the west and south. Some potential bumpouts are median refuge and rapid flashing beacon. There's a Lynnhurst mid-block crossing near Jefferson Avenue, and that would entail some curb ramp upgrades and rapid flashing beacon. Lynnhurst Road and Valley Road, that one would just be a rapid flashing beacon. Another location would be Lynnhurst and Meadowbrook for that signage, and then also Poplar near the high school where the existing painting is that has kind of faded over time, that would be another location where we propose a rapid flashing beacon. So you'll notice some of the areas where there's red notes, I just wanna point out that these may or may not make it to those final applications. So we did have some discussion about including Main Street and Downey Drive, but there really is no receiving facility or receiving sidewalk infrastructure, so that one may fall off the list, you know, 'cause you kind of have that improvement to nowhere. Next would be Rossar and Crompton. The thought would be to remove that and let that be covered with the currently funded roundabout project. Rossar and North Gate is the same as Main Street and Downey, that, you know, you could do some upgrades there, but there's really no receiving facility. So Public Works had a comment about potentially removing, so we'll be working with them and our consultants on whether or not to leave those in as part of the application. Bridge Avenue and Essex Avenue, that would be high-vis crosswalks across the northeast and south legs, and then potentially based on the location and kind of, I think, like the bottom of the hill, that may be a rapid flashing beacon would be helpful also at that location. Based on the Guilford approved townhouse development, there was some discussion about trying to have a crossing of Hope Men, you know, right where that proposed development is to the Food Lion. The consultants identified that that could be a high-vis crosswalk, a potential median refuge, and there's some questions about, you know, would we wanna narrow the travel lanes there to accommodate that along with the rapid flashing beacon? You know, Public Works does note that there's no receiving facility, so maybe we would want to remove that one and focus on King Avenue. So again, we're working on what the final application will entail. One that was identified originally was Broad and New Hope, but that one should be covered with the Broad Street Streetscape project. So some of these are overlapping things that we have to, you know, figure out what has already been funded and is on the books to be done. Poplar and Ivy was identified as a potential high-vis crosswalk. Again, that one might be something that falls off and is wait, we wait until we have some kind of overall intersection improvement study, 'cause there are some proposed upgrades that Public Works plans at that location. Hope Men and Bridge was identified, but again, that doesn't have the receiving facility, sidewalk facility, so, you know, maybe we won't focus on that one at this time. Delphine, Windsor, and Mountain, based on the speed at that location, the consultants are recommending, if we do want one there, that it be a PHB. So again, we're working with Public Works and identifying that also had an intersection improvement study that was done through the NPO, and so kind of sending all that information to the consultant and see if they think that's a location that should remain. Delphine and B Street would be high-vis crosswalks across the west and east legs and a potential PHB across Delphine. And then Broad and Park, that should be covered by the Broad Street Streetscape project, so we won't need to include it with these applications. Wayne and 13th, some high-vis crosswalks across the northeast and south legs, and that's also a location, that's an unsignalized intersection. Wayne and 14th, you'll note that the Greenway Phase III project covers that location, but based on some cost overruns, we had removed the rapid flashing beacons from that project, so wanna catch them in this application round. Main and Magnolia would be for high-vis crosswalks across the north and south legs and a median refuge. And then Delphine and Hope Men, there were some questions about whether anything had been proposed with the Delphine paving, but I believe that one, it was not included, so some potential curb ramp upgrades and pedestrian signals. And then the last is B Street and Hamlet, high-vis crosswalks either across all legs or potentially only the north side based on receiving facilities. And then C Street and Ivanhoe, a potential curb ramp on the northeast corner. We've also discussed with Public Works and with V.B.H., our consultants, pursuing maybe a separate pedestrian improvement application for some of the, not only, it's obviously pedestrian safety improvements, but ADA compliance along Ivy Street, and so that's also in flux as we continue to work those out. So these are the proposed locations. We'll continue to work with city departments, city staff, and our consultants, that will be providing the cost estimating. The applications will be submitted by October 31st, and then likely at your first meeting in November, we'll come back with an official resolution of those that actually stayed in and were applied for, for your approval, so that we can submit that as the scoring is occurring for those applications. But just a reminder that the H-SIP funding doesn't require any local match, and likely, hopefully, VDOT would administer this round also.
Any questions?
I've got just a couple.
Yes.
For Tiffany and Rossar.
Okay.
I think it's one that we, I've heard about for years. As Anita, I didn't see that on the list.
Okay.
In fact, I think we've had, I know we've had pedestrian crashes, and I think we've had a fatality in the vicinity. had a fatality in the vicinity over in the last six years. It's going to fall off of the scoring. But the other is the, quoting off of memory here, bless your heart for having to go through that list. It was a long list.
It's a lot of them.
And so I guess, one, just sort of context, I guess, for the better, you know, Mike, if we can, of, you know, give us some more time to maybe review these instead of the week before the application. You know, again, I know we're all busy and it's hard to do that, but that's a lot. So I'm going off of memory. The Hunter and East Main Street, that's a SmartScale project that was funded, and I think it has funding starting in 2025 or 2026. That was a road diet, so the curve delineation for that would be maybe throwaway because it's, there's a project there a couple, couple of years out from that, if I recall correctly.
We've had an uptick in recent experience there that prompted immediate consideration.
Stuff or...
Yeah. I don't think we're talking about a lot of money, but something, some sort of...
Because I caught my eye was a, was a, like a flashing Chevron.
Chevron, yeah.
Flashing Chevron.
And nothing's been determined. I think, yeah, maybe just as simple as in pavement markings. But yeah, that's a good point that there is a Streetscape funded project there.
And then, of course, there were a couple of other ones that you, we had 13th and Rossar, but then you also had 13th and, it's called something else on the other side of the street, I'm blanking off right now.
Yeah, the Crompton one would fall off because they're roundabout proposed there.
You had one listed at 13th and Rossar as well, so that's the same thing.
Yep.
And then the, the rapid flashing beacon at Rife and Wayne, I would only offer that there's a lane transition there that's a little funky. Actually, it's very funky because it's, the bridge was, I think, originally, there's, it's weird. So there's like two lanes in one direction and one lane in another direction. So there might, long short of it, if you're coming in northbound on Wayne, we would have to have advance notification if you were to put in, if you did the curb bump outs, because it's essentially a lane drop that I don't think anybody would...
Yeah, I know, we talked a little bit about the bump outs, and Public Works had some concerns about, you know, potential truck traffic. And I'd have to go back and see what the consultant specifically said. And then I guess the nice thing is also when you're going through the engineering, you know, some of those things would be determined. But yes, that is a location where we have some questions still, but that's helpful.
The only one I can remember now is the, the other one was on Hopeman and the Food Lion.
Yes.
I get it. But I'd also, if we, if we only have, you know, a handful to put in, is to, you know, focus on the ones that, well, one we get the complaints on, and I tell you that one Tiffany and Rossar, we hear about all the time. So if there's anything that we can do there, that would be wonderful. But then the anticipatory stuff is maybe, maybe for another application.
Yeah, and we can maybe separate them all out.
Yeah, it might be at 24, because it's just, it'd be unfortunate to get funding for that and then not get one that we hear about all the time.
Yeah, really need.
And there's just an absolute need for, increasing need. But it's complicated because of where the crosswalks are.
Yeah. And the 15 locations, which it's, my apologies for not having those before me, that we applied for in 2020, the last year's application round, we did have the Safety Circuit Rider kind of completion done, so we did focus on some of those higher priority ones. So I'd have to check to see if Tiffany and Rossar happens to be in that earlier one. But yes, so it would like, getting that map is us trying to get everything in one location so we also know, you know, all the other SmartScale funded and trying to build that out to make these things easier. So it's something we'd be able to share.
It almost might be kind of a neat idea. I probably oversell this to Todd and Mike, is, you know, utilizing the SAW MPO and the Technical Assistance Grant, the resources that we have there to lean into these things a year or two ahead of application and even have some, I'd love to be able to, for, to have some public buy-in, right, and some consciousness about what the, what the safety, the support for certain improvements are in their respective areas, because that was a, I think I might have, but a couple of them I didn't. I was like, where is that exactly? But for the most part, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So there's no action requested this evening. Staff will present resolutions of support at the next meeting, according to guidance furnished by council. Item 11, to consider reappointing Ms. Vicky Ferreira to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a four-year term ending August 31st, 2027.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short, for a second. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes by 4-0 vote. Item 12, consider appointing Stosh Kalinsky to the Parks and Recreation Commission for an unexpired, unexpired four-year term ending August 27th, 2027. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Kalinsky? Thank you, Mr. Allen, for a second.
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 4-0. Item 13 is communications, correspondence, calendar, and comments from city manager.
Yes, sir. I have two items this evening, the first being a reminder or an information piece that on November 8th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in this room, VDOT will conduct a public input session on safety improvements to the West Main Street corridor from the corporate limits to Hopeman Parkway. For those of you who have served on the MPO, this is the resulting project from a STAR study, and I think it'd be interesting, and certainly VDOT encourages the public to participate, come in, come by, and emphasize also that they would encourage elected officials to participate as well. So again, that's November 8th from 4:00 to 6:00 in this room. The next item is just a note on behalf of the treasurer. As you're likely aware, personal property bills were mailed last week. The treasurer acknowledges that there is an error on the bill and wants to extend her apologies and regrets for any confusion and frustration that results from that error. The treasurer had redesigned the bill for this year from last year, and I think there was an oversight with the printer in terms of picking up how to populate the various fields. So on the bill, it looks as if it's actually cheaper to pay late than it is to pay on time, which is an error. The treasurer emphasizes that the math on the bill is correct and that we would encourage citizens to pay on time and pay the lesser amount on time. And we're going to have some additional conversations about what to do beyond that December 5th due date. So more to come, but I want to emphasize the regret and apology from the treasurer. I think she's working hard to saturate the community, to acknowledge the mistake, and inform the public about how to proceed going forward. And that's all I have.
Mike, I did have a question of if the intent is to mail out replacement bills.
So we have not had that conversation. I think such a conversation is a little premature at this point.
Yeah, just, you know, given the deadline for the payment.
It's twice you've been asked that today.
So I have a plan, I need to have a conversation with the treasurer.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
All right. So item 14 is citizen comment.
No one has signed up to speak.
Greg, anything you'd like to say?
Jacob, a citizen? I mean, all right. Item 19 is to hold a closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property to be used for municipal offices as authorized by Section 2.23711A3.
Okay, so I think we need a motion to consult with the city attorney regarding legal matters arising from and relating to a data breach, requiring the provision of legal advice as authorized by Section 2.23711A8 of the Code of Virginia.
I was going by my notes, I apologize. All right. So we need someone to make that?
Vice Mayor, I move this meeting to be recessed and that the city council, Wayne, should immediately reconvene in a closed meeting per Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A8 to consult with the city attorney regarding legal matters arising from and relating to a digital forensics and incident response statement of work requiring the provision of legal advice.
Is that the right one?
That's correct.
Well, okay. All right, is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Board.
Ms. Fairwood.
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are in closed session. Oh, goodness. How bad is the gentleman? Bad as the gentleman.